Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget and CIP Overview Work Session on Thursday, April 13th, 2023, 9:00 a.m. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kalshi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item four is our budget overview, starting with item 4.1 is Presentation, Discussion, and Potential Direction to Staff on the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 with Year End Estimates and Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Annual Budget. Mr. Knutson, if you want to start us off?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. It's our first work session to start talking about the budget. We had some conversations back at our annual retreat, and staff has been very, very hard at work prior to that and then since that time to present some information to you here today, so let's get some feedback and then advance towards the July 1 fiscal year budget. A lot of effort, a lot of hard work from the executive team and all of our department directors, our division managers, all the employees throughout the organizations that contributed ideas, thoughts, and concerns through the budget process. Special thanks to Jill Olson and her team. Angie and Allison are wonderful in that process, and so I want to thank everybody that participated. This work session here today is maybe a little bit different than we did last year. Typically, we do the first work session is on the Capital Improvement Plan, and then we come back about a month later and we talk about the operational budget. But as Ms. Olson starts her presentation, she'll just go dive a little bit into the operational budget. So last year, we had some questions that came up, but more in the June timeframe or in that second work session, so we just want to make sure that all ample opportunity is available for the council to ask questions and provide direction and feedback. I'm going to try my best, Jill, not to step on your toes, but you will be talking a little bit about the kind of the financial condition of the city and some overarching aspects within with regards to the operational budget, which is 4.1, the first item on the agenda this morning. We're seeing some cost decreases with the supply chain issues, and you know, at one time, we're seeing 25% to 30% increases on some of our projects, so we're seeing some stabilization with regards to some of those projects, which is great news. But we are seeing some increases in some other areas. Fuel is back on the rise, and there's costs that are basically assigned to the city that we have no control over, that come from the state down to the cities, such as the PSPRS or the Public Safety Retirement System, and our contributions towards that. With that, we're be able to present the council and with a fully funded budget. There's some concerns with the Water and Wastewater Fund, but that's council's well aware, and we have a plan, and we're moving forward in that aspect. And this budget that we're presenting to council will have no debt insurance. It's a very conservative approach, and we think that we're doing our best to meet the needs of the community and provide, maintain, and improve the quality of services that we do to our residents and visitors and to our business owners. So with that, I try not to step on any of your toes, Jill. If I could turn it over to you to start us off, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yeah, that was my entire presentation, so we can skip right to CIP. Just kidding. I too want to thank the budget team, Angie and Ally, as well as all the department staff throughout the organization. Everybody contributed to the budget process, and that contribution is greatly appreciated. For today, as Jess mentioned, we'll go through kind of the budget process and the materials that you have. We'll look at what we're estimating for this fiscal year, because that then becomes kind of the basis from where we project next fiscal year, especially on the revenue side. And then we'll take a look at this year's projected available fund balance or available resources in each of the funds, and look at kind of what the assumptions that we've made so far in development of the 2324 operating budget, so that you'll have an idea of what's included when it comes back in May. And then we'll cover the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan. Greg Frosley will lead that presentation to talk about all of the capital projects, and then we will launch into discussion and questions. So you did receive a packet of information. It has some basic information, mostly on CIP. You'll see more detailed worksheets. As part of this entire budget process, we'll take a look at the schedule that's up on the screen. That is very typical each year, so it's a very long process, at least for staff. Much of the public part comes later and kind of at the end. We will give you a, or you've received your CIP book, which shows all of the projects and the funding sources for those projects, and then you'll also see again those detailed project sheets. When we return on May 11th for the next budget work session, you will get the operating side of the city's finances. We'll look at the five-year financial projections for the funds. We will take a look at the revenue highlights, including what assumptions were made for each of the revenue areas, and more detail on the expenditure side. So we're going to start with looking at this fiscal year and how we are doing. This is just a quick synopsis of comparison by fund. You'll see the first column is budgeted revenues compared to what we think that revenues will be at June 30 of this year. Then the third column over is the budgeted expenses compared to what we estimate the budgeted expenses to be at June 30. You can see for the general fund, the revenues and expenditures are fairly close in what we budgeted. We are estimated to bring in significantly less or to spend significantly less in the expense side, especially for general fund. A lot of that on the revenue and expense side is due to the fact that we do budget for unknown grants. We budget for the grants we know, and then we throw in additional dollars in case we get grants that we're not even aware of during the budget process, so that we still have a budget allocation that we can apply should we receive an additional grant. As you may recall, that in Arizona, once we set that maximum, set that budget, that is the cap. When you adopt that number in June, we cannot spend more than that, no matter what we bring in. If we bring in an extra $10 million, if we didn't budget to spend the extra $10 million, we're not able to spend it until the following year where we can add that allocation. So that's why it's important for us to kind of put those little cushions in, mostly for the grant side. The estimated actual expenditures, that is low mostly due to the vacancy savings because of the recruitment issues that we still have and a lot of the supply chain issues. Many of the projects and the equipment are not being, the projects won't be completed and the equipment won't be received by June 30, many of them, so we're having to carry those forward into the next year. And you'll hear me use the word "carry forward" quite a bit. The "carry forward" is just the term that we use for when something that we estimated would occur this fiscal year is not going to, and it has to be carried forward to the next fiscal year. That's why we do that. If we don't carry it forward, we don't have the allocation in place for when that item does come in or when the project gets completed to actually spend those dollars and pay for those projects and equipment. So for Highway User Revenue Funds, you can see the different numbers there. You do see an additional amount on the expenditure side compared to the revenue, and that is due to transfers that we made primarily from the general fund into the Highway User Revenue Fund, the additional $10 million that was transferred in. You can see that we're not estimating to spend all that by June 30, so a big portion of that will be carried forward into next fiscal year. And you can see the results for some of the other funds as well. I won't read through each of those. There we go. So this worksheet is to reflect our estimates, staff's estimates, for revenues expenditures for the current year and the effect that that has on our fund balance or the available resources for each of these individual funds. So you're going to see available resources at the beginning of this fiscal year. We add the amount of revenue we think we'll get, subtract the expenditures. We add or subtract, depending upon the fund, the transfers in and out, and then that gives us the balance that we think we will have at the end of this fiscal year. So on the transfers out, just to highlight a couple of items, on the general fund, the transfers out, that $12.5 million, $10 million, is that transferred to the Highway User Revenue Fund. You'll see the $10 million just down a line on the Highway User Revenue. There's the $10 million going in. And then we also transferred $2.5 million out of the general fund, which represents the construction sales tax portion in the general fund that gets transferred to CIP to cover the general government portion of the items you see in the CIP. And then you'll see a rather large transfer out of water, and that is because the flood control revenues and expenditures typically roll up into water for reporting purposes, but we've moved flood control back out of the water fund just to make it cleaner, so that we're reflecting only water revenues, not the flood control amounts. And then, as it stays in the little note there, the budget stabilization reserve for each of the funds that has one is not included in these numbers. So, but a stabilization, just for example, for the general fund is about $30 million. So the general fund does have an additional 30, which is 50% of our average five years of revenues, to give us about six months' worth of operating funds should we start to see a downturn in the economy. So now we'll take a look at some of the assumptions that we used as we estimated for the next fiscal year. First, we'll look at revenues. We are still reviewing projections for revenues and expenditures. We're anticipating some cost savings, and there could be revenue adjustments, particularly in sales taxes, as we follow those amounts each month. When we receive additional information, if it indicates we need to adjust our estimated June 30 number, we will do that, which could then also affect our projection for the following year. So we will still be watching that very closely, probably through the end of April, so that we have all the, those numbers will be brought to you in May. We are not likely, unless it's material, to make additional changes after that. So to start, the revenue estimates are based upon what we're seeing as existing trends. Got economic forecasts, we look at legislative changes, we try to obtain as much information in many areas as we possibly can. In the general fund, there is an increase in the state shared income tax dollar amount. You may recall that the state provided for a tax cut of 2.5% for future years. It actually will start affecting us in FY '26 for the tax cuts that occur in FY '24. To try and offset the amount of reduction in revenue that we should be getting eventually for that, they have increased the distribution to cities and towns from 15% to 18%. So we'll be getting a little bit more in that category, but getting less on the income tax-only side of it. On property tax, for now, we again held the rate flat, so the rate would be the same as it was last year for now, before further council action possibly or direction, which that gives us a total tax levy of a little over $6.3 million. So there's no proposed increase to the tax rate. However, since the county has estimated there will be an increase in assessed value, we will have additional revenue associated with that flat tax rate of about $275,000 for the year. So, and then there's an additional amount that we received due to new construction. So those are the dollar amounts. Should you want to talk about changing that, we would need to then, if we want to not leave it rate, the flat rate, I shouldn't say, I should say, we don't want to leave the rate flat, then we're going to have to pull $275,000 out of the general fund estimates. The legislative impacts, I've explained a little bit for the future. The loss that we see in the state shared income tax, we're getting an increase due to going from 15% to 18% share as a city. However, the first year that it hits us for the tax reduction is FY '26, and that's about a $400,000, but within three years, we're losing over $1 million a year from that tax rate cut or reduction. So an increase on one side, but a decrease on the other. And then for water and wastewater, we, as everyone is aware, we're in the middle of a utility rate study, which we are moving along on. We have stakeholder meetings that we're planning. So we have not included any rate increases in the numbers that you'll see today, which we're not, I'm going to talk a little bit about the water and sewer funds, but for now, we have not reflected any rate increases. Council had directed in prior meetings and at the end of last year to talk about our improvement districts, the two improvement districts that we have, a little bit earlier in the budget process, so that you could consider some changes to that potentially. This is the same information that we brought you at council's planning session in February. So for now, we have included it to look just like it does for this fiscal year. So we haven't made any changes, but we are looking for council direction as to, do you want to continue one or both of them as is? Do you want to dissolve one or both of them? And there will be a legal process associated with dissolution. And then any dissolution, should we dissolve them, but we want to continue that level of service, we would have to determine how we would pay for that level of service if we were to lose either of these sources of revenue. For improvement district number two at the London Bridge Plaza, the expenses that are covered by that almost $17,000 a year are utilities and mostly the landscaping contract. And then, oh, and just for your information as well, the fund balance for improvement district number two is about $8,800 right now. For improvement district number four, that covers utilities and then our internal costs for landscaping and maintenance. So our Parks and Recreation Maintenance Staff takes care of that, so that's an internal cost that helps pay for the upkeep of the McCullough median. So that tax levy is more, it's about $64,000. So if that were to dissolve, then we would just need to absorb those costs if you want this level of service to remain the same. And that fund balance is a little over $17,000 right now. So after staff takes a look at the total funds available and looking at the revenues, we then look to our existing service levels and any directives that we've received from council to determine what the expenditure side needs to look like in order to bring it to you. I'm going to walk through some of the variances and assumptions that we have used for these estimates, and then we'll get into more detail when we have your May meeting. So for now, preliminarily, we are showing a few areas where we have increases. As you are aware, we do have salary schedules that include steps, and so these step increases as they're scheduled for each employee, those have been included in the numbers so far. We have also added a, what we're calling a wage stabilization adjustment of 5%, and that is to move toward bringing our salaries and wages up to market. And the Director of Human Capital or Human Resources gave you some information on that at the planning session as well, as to where we are compared to the market on the average. So this is a step toward trying to close that gap. And just for background reasons or just to keep in the back of your mind, that 5% for the general fund is about $2 million. So for each 1%, it's about a $400,000 increase in costs, and that's a weighted cost. So that's the cost of not only salaries, but everything, all the other costs that are based upon salary, PSPRS, ASRS, Social Security, Medicare, et cetera. Increase to retirement rates, we are getting a significant increase in PSPRS, the Public Safety Retirement System. Those increases are significant, they have been included. For the fire department, it's increasing, as you know, there are different increases depending upon the tier for the employees, but so kind of on the average overall, it's increasing just over three percentage points. So that's going to be up to 75% in some of those categories. Police is increasing by nearly four percentage points, and that brings it up to approximately 74.5% for a PSPRS rate. The increases in costs for materials and chemicals and equipment due to inflation, we have for those that we have no control over and we don't, if we don't see any relief coming soon, we have increased some of those line items because we know we have to have certain chemicals and certain materials. So we have adjusted for the inflation effects of that. We've been given an estimated increase in health insurance premiums and costs right now of about 5%, so we have added that into the numbers. One thing that we'll be putting into the numbers, you may recall, we do, we ask the departments to start with their base budgets. So we take this year's budget, we back out anything that's a one-time expense, and brings each department back to their base level. Anything that they want to request for the following fiscal year that's above that base, that's not included in the base, they put forward in the form of supplemental requests. Some, these are costs that will supplement their existing base budget. We received about $22 million worth of requests in all funds, about $11 million in requests for the general fund, and most of those are one-time expenditures. We've taken a look at those, and we think, because so much of it was the one-time, based upon the current fund balance, we could probably, tentatively, we're looking at adding some minimal dollars, $9 million on the general fund side, and about $2 million in Highway User Revenue Funds. For water and wastewater, we are either putting those on hold or delaying them, pushing them out until we know the results of the rate study, because the current operating revenues are not sufficient to cover all of the expenditures. We are showing some estimated savings, salary savings due to vacancies, which I mentioned prior. And this is, historically, we have savings there annually. So this concludes kind of the general overview portion of the presentation. So then I will kick off the next CIP portion, and then Greg Frosley, Public Works Director, will get into more of the details of the CIP. So again, thank you to all of the staff that worked so hard on the Capital Improvement Plan projects, the departments doing their submissions, the public works, project managers and staff putting together.
Mr. Mayor?
The worksheets.
If I can, Jill, so this is item 5.1 on the agenda then? We broke it up into two parts just to separate the operations from the CIP.
Yes.
Just a budget process, public hearing, and all the rest.
Yeah, I apologize. Do you want to stop, Mayor, and talk about the first portion before we move into CIP?
Yes, yeah, let's do that, just in case citizens came in to talk about one or the others, so I'll bring it to council to have some discussion. So lots was just unpacked there for us. Not surprising, obviously, we went through the planning session that we had in February, and a lot of these things are in more detail, presented in more detail this morning, but we understood the big picture from that. So a few things that we need to talk about and give direction on that I heard, and then we'll get feedback from council on the other items, are the tax rate. Are we comfortable keeping the tax rate flat? Or is that something that we want to discuss adjusting? And then also the improvement districts, there's two of them that were presented. Do we want to keep those, change them, make any adjustments to that? So maybe we'll start with tax rate, because anyone have any thoughts on the tax rate? Yeah, so from my perspective, the tax rate, this would be, I believe, the sixth year of keeping the tax rate flat. As the assessed values in our community have fluctuated over the years, the income has also fluctuated with that. But you know, we hear daily and at our council meetings during Call to the Public, priorities that council wants, from park development and resources for park amenities, park maintenance, aquatic centers at our last meeting, free swim days at our pools, I mean, all of these types of things cost money, and in order to deliver those services, we have to be able to get it from somewhere. I think it's prudent to keep the tax rate flat, and there's consistency to that. The amount to offset is $275,000, not taking into account the new construction. I don't think it's outrageous to keep the tax rate flat, but by adjusting it, we would have to talk about what areas that we don't want to prioritize or take monies away from. And I think what I've been hearing from council through different discussions and things that we've been having in our public hearings is that we want to invest. We want to invest in the resources that we have here, and I think the only way to do that is to have the financial resources to be able to do that. But that's my perspective, and I'm open to other ideas or thoughts on the tax rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
If we're going around the room looking for consensus, I agree, I think we should keep the tax rate flat. Any changes are kind of just purely symbolic. I'm proud that we've been able to keep it flat. As far as the improvement districts, it sounds like District Four on the median, we're going to be paying for it anyway, no matter what we do, so I see that we would keep that. I'm just a little confused as far as District Two, what exactly, you know, utilities and the landscape contract in that area, is that mainly for like the business, is there a reason, a little more history behind that? I'm not too familiar with that. Is it just for to help those businesses, or is it because they use it for the, so what, maybe just a little more information before I could make a decision on District Two?
Yeah, so District Two, which is the London Bridge Plaza, is, it's my understanding that the association down there wants to keep this in place. So this is, all of these improvement districts are districts that are self-taxing. So folks in a similar neighborhood come together and say, hey, let's levy a tax on ourselves to provide additional services or enhance services to our district or our area. The London Bridge Plaza is actually very large. It goes all the way from Marlborough all the way down to South Palo Verde and between London Bridge Road and Alleyway, I'm not sure, but Zeta Del Soar. So, thank you, Councilmember Koch. So that whole swath of area is that area, but there's enhanced landscaping that they do, so we have landscaping contractor, not using city staff or city staff resources that provide landscaping services. That really is the bulk of that, nearly $17,000. And then there's some minor utility costs as well that are part of that. So it's my understanding again that they want to keep that taxing district in place. The McCullough Improvement District, this is basically Wheeler Park from Smoke Tree down to Lake Havasu Avenue. Does it go that far? I think it's that whole area, but Wheeler Park is primarily where it's at. That's a taxing district in there. I've never heard from a single business or property owner in that area that they want to dissolve this. And if we dissolve the taxing districts, the money that we spend to do it then has to come out of the general fund in this case, because it's a park expense. So I've never heard from a single resident that they want it. So you know, although it sounds great to get rid of taxing districts, but we forget the part that these are self-imposed taxing districts. So if they don't do that, if they don't have that imposed tax levy, then we either have to absorb the cost or we not, or not provide the services. In the case of the McCullough median, we have to provide the services to the, we'd have In the case of, of the McCullough median, we have to provide the service to, we'd have Wheeler Park full of weeds and tall grasses and all those types of things. But, so I've never heard anyone at all that owns property in either of these districts advocate to get rid of them. But I know
So just to clarify, it's not the average citizen in town, it's not, it's not everybody's property bill, it's only for the people that are in those specific areas?
Correct. Yeah. And then to add to that point, but then if they go away, then it is every taxpayer that's paying for it because the costs have to be absorbed somehow if we give direction to move forward, but.
All right, I made my decision. I'm okay with it, let's keep it.
Perfect. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I just, I'm, I'm okay with District Number Two, but District Number Four bothers me because it is definitely used by all the citizens of Lake Havasu City, like a park or any other parks that we use. And so I personally would like to see that go away because I just don't think it's fair to that district to be responsible for that. And that's my only direction. I know this isn't going to vote, but I spoke of it before. Of course, I dug in further to the London Bridge Plaza and you, you're right, they're perfectly okay with that. But the District Four, I have talked to some people and they do believe it's more like a park, we use Wheeler Park, why are they the ones responsible to have to pay for it and would like to see that removed? The few people that I've spoken to.
Thank you. Do you have any thoughts, Councilmember Campbell, on the property tax rate? Are you comfortable leaving the rate flat?
Because of the switch in funding, like I would have liked to seen that go down, but like Councilmember Dolan just said, that it is pretty symbolic because it really doesn't change or alter your tax bill that much. But in the meantime, I understand that we're going to need an additional $64,472 from somewhere to possibly take that burden off those very few businesses that are on McCullough. And I would absolutely encourage low-use water, use plants, anything we can do, obviously Wheeler Park is beautiful and we're probably not going to touch that, but as we improve McCullough Boulevard, there's going to be a lot of infrastructure that we're looking into. So maybe there's ways that we can improve the overall cost by using better choices of plants and, and increase the bubbler systems to help reduce those costs. But I, I do think that's used by a majority of the people like any other park, and I don't think certain business owners should be targeted with that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from members of the council?
Yeah, I'll chime in. I'm okay holding the tax rate flat this year. I, like you, Mayor, I've, I've heard lots once, lots of investments that we need to be made and, and I like to hold that property tax flat. As far as the taxing districts, I, you know, I jumped in with the London Bridge Plaza Association, been going to their board meetings for a little bit, checked with them a couple times and they, they want to make sure that that's still in place to make sure, I mean, really we take care of, I say we because I'm a property owner down there too, but we, we take care of our whole district. 16,000 is about 10% of what we spend on our own district down there, so. But yeah, I'm, I'm okay holding that. I, I was kind of a proponent for getting rid of the median, you know, the McCullough median taxing district. I don't see how that really makes sense for those businesses to pay for that little improvement. I, I understand why it was put in place in the first place, but it may be outdated. I wish that I had talked to a few more people up there to see what they thought, see what they want to do with their own taxing district because you made a great point that they are self-imposed, they're the ones who did it. So, I don't know, I, I'm, I'd like to get rid of it unless there's an unintended consequence that, that I haven't thought about yet.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think the only outcome of getting rid of the McCullough median is that we'd have to come up with $64,000, as Councilmember Campbell said, to provide the same level of services we're doing now, but maybe there is scale of efficiency that we can find ways to save through other operating means in that district. So, any other, Councilmember Coke?
I'm fine with leaving the tax levy the same. I think that's something we've been able to do the last years, really been good for our citizens, even though the property rates have, assessments have gone up. I think that's something that fluctuates and we don't have control over that. And in my years here on council, I've never had one business owner complain to me or bring it up in any budget session and we talk about it every year. I hope that if there's people out there that are not happy with it, that they would come to us prior to these budget meetings because that's why we have the public invited. So if there are business owners out there that are not happy with that, I encourage them to attend the meetings or at least let us know, but I haven't heard from one. So I'm okay leaving both districts.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm okay with leaving the tax levy the way it is and improvement district two, I'm, I'm okay with that too. Can you tell me how many businesses are affected by that District Four?
Yeah, I think, we're using the word businesses, but it's really property owners.
Do we know how many that is?
I don't know, and looking at Ms. Olson, it doesn't look like she has the number off of
I do not.
Top of your mind, no.
I don't know.
But it's, it's those between Smoke Tree and Lake Havasu Avenue, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, so the, the boundary to the south is Lake Havasu Avenue, to the west it's Mesquite Avenue, to the north it's Smoke Tree Avenue, to the east it's Swanson Avenue. So it's all the properties that are contained in that, in that area.
Can you kind of tell me what kind of maintenance we're doing there besides, like, if it's just like Wheeler Park, I do understand that everybody uses that, the citizens, what are the other maintenance things that we do in that area?
So the maintenance that specifically required in that district are done at this time is irrigation, including repairs, tree and shrub trimming, raking, turf maintenance, including irrigation, mowing and aeration, and the fountain, which is operation, maintenance and daily cleaning. And then also on top of that would be any electrical and water that's needed for that area.
So, so a lot of it is the Wheeler Park area, correct? I understand there haven't been a lot of complaints, but in all fairness, you know, I, I would be okay with, with taking that one away.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as keeping the tax rate the same, I believe we need to keep the, keep it exactly the same. I think the return on investment to our property owners here in town is well worth that. I'd be curious just to know if we can break it down. It's 275,000, what that breaks down to per parcel? You know, is it a dollar per parcel? I don't know how many parcels we actually have. If, if we raise the rates or we lowered the rates to collect the same amount? Does that make sense?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we could look at something where we just pull a property tax bill of a couple of different values and then take a look at them. And that'd be the way to do it because everything is based on assessed valuation, so.
Right. Yeah. And just kind of curious as to how much per parcel that would be, if there was a difference if we lowered the property tax rate or we kept it the same.
Yeah, we could take a couple, a couple bills and then take a look at it from that perspective because it wouldn't be a per parcel, it would be a per hundred dollars assessed valuation.
Right. Okay, thank you. But for 275,000, I think we need to keep that. Like I said, the return on investment, we would have to cut something. And where would those cuts come from? The improvement districts, I'd like to know a little bit more on District Four as well. As you said, Mayor, these are self-imposed, but when, when was District Four self-imposed? And is it the same property owners? We don't know whether it's the same property owners. So be kind of curious to actually hear from those property owners. As Councilmember Coke said, hey, if you guys want to do away with this, great. If you want to continue with it and help out the, the citizens, that's great, but it is something that all the citizens use, so all the citizens probably should be the ones that are paying for that. But then again, the property owners may want to, who knows? So I'd like to hear from them. I think we also need to, to keep that tax rate the same. We have, as Ms. Olson said, unfunded liability for PSPRS. And Ms. Olson, I question, the, this plus 3% for fire and plus 4% for PD, does that take into account the current legislation, where they're trying to lower the amount that the employee actually pays? Or is this based on last year's?
This is just the most recent numbers that we received from PSPRS, what they'll be assessing.
Okay. And do we know, do we know what the unfunded liability is that we owe right now?
I think between 150 and 170 million.
Okay, which is a lot of money. An unfunded liability that we will owe, so definitely need to be able to pay that. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Currie, did you have something to add on the districts at all?
Yeah, what, how, what do you want me to, what do you want me to start?
Yeah, so on the District Four for the McCullough, do we, do you know any of that history?
Yes, so I'll just go back historically on all the districts. So initially, Mojave County created three improvement districts that constructed various improvements within Lake Havasu City. This would have been way, way, way prior to the incorporation of the city. So once those improvements were completed and the bonds were satisfied, the county dissolved the county improvement districts. Upon the dissolution of those districts, the city then created five improvement districts that included those three areas. This was in 1987. And then the purpose of those districts was to maintain the improvements that were created by the county. That's, that's historically, so that's where all of these started. Over time, certain, certain districts have been dissolved. A lot of them had to do with the gas lights and as the gas lights became unusable or fell apart, people didn't want to maintain them anymore, we dissolved those, those, those parts and those parts of the districts.
Perfect, yeah.
And I mean, I have more, if you want specifics on anything, I have more data, I just don't know how specific anybody wants to go.
Yeah, maybe, the McCullough one seems to, do you know anything about how many parcels or people?
I don't know the number of parcels. I mean, I have a map and I, it's generally, there's larger parcels on, on the one side and then kind of a group of small parcels, so it looks roughly to be probably maybe 50, between 50 and 100 parcels.
Okay.
In there, just, and I'm eyeballing it.
Yeah.
Off a very tiny map.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Hold me to that, but yeah, somewhere in that range.
I think we understand where it's at. When it comes to the McCullough median, it, it does seem like we're spending a lot of money in one centralized area and we're getting it from really widespread. I mean, if you have a lot on the corner of Mesquite and Smoke Tree, you have nothing to do with Wheeler Park or any of the things. So I'm, I'm in favor of giving direction today to dissolve it. It gives us an opportunity to, to talk and engage with property owners. We always can make adjustments in our made budget hearing as we go through, but I mean, I'm seeing with the knot of heads, we're, we're okay, let's keep improvement district number two, the London Bridge Plaza, full direction, let's, let's move forward from a budget planning perspective to get rid of improvement district four, and then we can have additional discussion about it if necessary at our next hearing. Is that, everyone's comfortable with that? Okay. And then we'll keep the property tax rate flat. Before we open the public hearing, would, are there any other comments from the general operation conversation that Ms. Olson had?
Mayor and council, I would like to discuss. At first, when I heard the 5% increase across wage stabilization, I was concerned because I know the costs across the board just seemed to be going up and up and up, and I was concerned about our taxpayers, but I will honestly say I did my due diligence when I was doing our company's taxes and I, we're up 18% in salaries. So that has definitely changed my mind that I think it's completely unfair for my company to, I mean, I wouldn't have been able to keep the good employees that I've had. That's a pretty big hit even for somebody like us, it's been around since 1974 for one year to be adjusted that high. So I hope the citizens understand that I am absolutely for the 5% increase this year based on, it just seems realistic to me. On another level, when we talk about the PSPRS, very concerning. I will have to say, as a business that's been here for a long time, we've had to use our retirees a little differently. And they've, it's worked out and it's been beneficial to us and it's a new theory that we put into place. We've been doing it for a couple of years now and we couldn't be happier. What we have done is some of our retirees, we've had an extension of time of services in a result of like a reserve or an on-call or substitute. So it's been absolutely beneficial to kind of keep, keeping some of our retirees on the payroll a little bit per se, they're not on the insurance, they're not on the extra service costs, but at any particular time, we have to call our main mechanic and say, hey, we have a situation, our concern, our question, or we have one of our main mechanics having to go on vacation, would you mind filling in? The eagerness of this generation coming in with their coffee cups, being able to join in again, has been inspiring to me and to my staff and the education level. I know we all love to retire, I did it at 54, and then after a while you get a little bored and if the cigar bar asked me to come back and work a couple nights, I probably would do it for fun, you know what I mean? So again, a completely different way of looking at this. I don't expect this to get fixed right the right way, but I just wanted to open that up to everyone here that it has been incredibly positive for our company. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, I was also a little bit leery with the wage stabilization adjustment, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with it. I do have a question for the reason, is this, what are we basing this? Are we basing this on retention, recruiting, like what are, what is our reasoning behind this? I mean, I understand the cost of everything, our wages went up in our place of business too, I'm just kind of curious where, where we're coming up with this.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Berlin, start looking at wages for employees that, you know, across, across the board, we're behind the market. A lot of, there's been a lot of craziness that's occurred the last couple of years, even since the last time we would take a look at a positional analysis and where we take a look at the market and we had adjust rates based on, on the market. And that's really kind of where our, our measuring stick, it's all based on the market. There's no, there's no, we don't pick and choose and point to see what, what that looks like from this perspective. But in addition to, to this, we also have targeted approaches. So we've made, I've made some decisions that are, that are more targeted in water and wastewater, for example, as well as most recently in dispatch. We have situations where we have a large volume of vacancies that put extreme stress on the rest of the existing staff. Our ability to retain employees is, is, is key. We would much rather, you know, pay our existing employees market rates so that they're not looking for other jobs in other, other cities or other areas. And then, and then, and then the difficulty we have then with, with attraction, so it's all tied to that. Bobby Hamilton is our HR director, he did some analysis just a few months back and took a look, took a look at identifying, what, about 50 different positions, I believe it was, and through, and kind of see where we're at based on that. So grab 50 positions within the city, compare those 50 positions and what they, in other cities, and at that time, again, a couple of months ago, the numbers changed so, so quickly, I think we were 13% behind market on, on average. So Ms. Hamilton and we discussed and kind of what's that look like? Do we come to council and say we need 13% increase? That's a lot, that's a, that's a, that's an extreme situation. But maybe, what can we do now to, to send the message to our existing employees from a retention perspective is that as an employer, we appreciate you, we're glad you're here and keep up the, keep up the good work. And if there are vacancies that occur, and I think we're in the twenties, high twenties, I think, right now for number of vacancies that are out there, you know, we want to be able to attract the, the most skilled employees to either inhabit Sue or come to Havasu. And then last point on that too is just the, looking at just the cost of living in, in Havasu is greatly increased. Surely our ability to attract employees from outside Havasu to move to Havasu is, is, is very, very difficult. Hope that helped?
Thank you. Yes, I, I just don't, I don't want this to be coming back every single year on a way to be able to keep our employees by, you know, giving a wage increase. I want, you know, I think that we need to look at other things of, of why are we having trouble, you know, retaining, why are we having trouble recruiting? It can't just be based on this. I've had a business for 27 years and I have employees that have been there for 18 years and some of them have never gotten a raise and they're still there. So I, I just want that message to come through that, hey, you know, just because you're not happy here, we're going to give you a raise, you know, I just kind of want to put that message out there. But I will, this year I'm okay with it.
Excellent. Good, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. One thing I do want to bring up on that 5% because I thought, wow, 5%, that's, I don't know whether that was high or low, but you know, several years ago, or what's it been now, three years, four years since we did the positional analysis? And the reason we had to do the positional analysis is because prior councils continued to kick the can down the road and not ensure that our employees were at a fair market value for the skills and knowledge and abilities that they bring to the city. And when we look at this 5%, it doesn't even match the, the inflation rate. So we're actually going backwards even at 5%. And so we don't want to be that council that kicks that can down the road like we did or other councils did before us, where we're losing our best and our brightest than those that don't have those knowledge, skills and abilities that we need to, to have a good workforce within the city. So I think 5% is actually quite low, just because it doesn't even keep up with inflation. So their purchasing power for our employees is actually less than what it was last year. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
No, those were my sentiments the last time we talked about this, that 5% was not keeping up with inflation. I will, you know, I will, you know, give that, I think the market has softened, things are stabilizing, coming a little bit back, but to your point, Councilwoman Lynn, I know you don't want to come back again and again, but I think we're going to keep coming back again and again, because we're too afraid to make it right the first time with 5%. Those are my personal views, that's how I view it. Like Councilwoman Campbell, I'm in the double digits as far as percentage-wise of wage increases, what I've had to do to stay, to keep up with market, if not stay a little bit ahead, because I want, you know, the best and brightest, so 5% isn't going to do it, but I get that we're a council, we got to come to this decision together. I hope we can figure it out. I do like the, kind of the targeted approach, I don't like the blanket across the board where, you know, some of our top-tier leadership, maybe not, you know, we're fine there, but the lower and the middle guys might need a bump up. But the more we start playing with that, the more we might start getting back into the old thing, where we're going to start compressing our pay structure again, which is the problem we had and why we had to do the last analysis. So it's a tricky situation, and I appreciate everybody working towards it, because it's something we need to fix, definitely fix. And Nancy, I have a couple of host positions, a couple of host shifts, if you drop off a resume, and I'll let you come have some fun at the restaurant.
You wouldn't know what to do, because the place would be so packed if I weren't there. With that said, I was happy that I had a discussion with Jill this morning in regards to the same concern about the blanket across the board, and I was happy to hear that each department head has some flexibility to hire the best and the brightest amongst each department. So more of a targeted approach, they will have to work with that, and at any particular time, that particular department has to come to us and say, hey, there is a couple people I'd really, really like to recruit, and what do you think? And if they can't adjust it in their own contingency or their own budget to make it right, I certainly hope that they would come to us and let us know. Because I know for a fact in my businesses, there are some departments, we have a stack of applications this big, and there's no reason to raise the rate for anybody, and we also have like three of our substitutes/reserves that are on call, that every time we call them, we're like, absolutely, bring in my copy, I can't wait to come into work and answer those phones, because that gets me out of the house, you know? So we have some departments that are working incredibly efficiently, and then we have other departments, and I'll just use the word mechanics, that are absolutely impossible to get, and we have to get, you know, we have to start from the bottom and recruit them up and train them, and again, those substitutes coming in and training some of the new leads has been instrumental to us. So it is a learning process, we're in a different world for sure, but I think that we're, we'll figure it out, and I don't think, Councilwoman Lynn, it does need to be a flat 5% across the board. I think each department needs to be creative, and needs to come to us and let us know their concerns, or not us personally, but the city manager. But thank you.
All right, are there any other comments before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
You get, we get what we pay for, we have this discussion a lot. I don't get to do this in my office and call everybody in at the gas station and tell them, well, rates are up, and feel bad for me. No, I either pay people, or I don't have people to do what I need to do, so I think this is exactly where we are, you know? We, 5% is, to me, another symbolic thing we're doing, it doesn't even keep up with inflation. We, you know, I see only really two options, is we do it, we start all over with another positional analysis, and when it comes back, we pay whatever that is, because these experts are telling us where we need to pay, or we trust the experts that we have in the room right now. We have tremendous HR department, we have great department heads, they know what we need, but they need to come to us with a realistic budget, and this is what we need, and we need to do it, and we need to not complain, and we need to raise, you know, the rates or whatever we need to do, you know, when the police don't show up, or the fire department doesn't show up, or the fire department shows up and the truck won't start, you know, it doesn't matter what we want, and, you know, so, like I said, we get what we pay for, and if we are, we're not, if we're not going to be competitive at that level, we're at 20% now, next year at this time, it could be 30%, and, you know, where do those departments, which department suffer? So like I said, I think this is just the Band-Aid that we need to rip off, and we've done it once before with pretty much a majority of this council, I think we need to do it again, and whether it's, like I said, a positional analysis, or Bobby let her rip and tell us exactly what we need to do, and let's do it, because if we don't, we're already behind the APAL already, we're too far behind, and if we don't do something right now, I don't think 5% is really going to do anything. So maybe we keep the 5% in there as a marker right now, but I think we need to take this very serious, and we're going to be way worse next year at this time, so.
Yeah, I just remind everyone that it is a balance, so we have to have a balance, there's, and I think that what's happening here is the team is coming to us and saying that, you know, they've met, and so they think it's equitable to have a step increase plus the 5% stabilization, that's what's happening here, we're going to have to take a look at every market, I mean, even in my work outside of council, I could make more money in my industry if I worked in a different community. I like living here, and so this is my community, this is where I'm going to live, so I'm willing to make less in my industry than I would otherwise, and be able to live in this great place. So, I mean, I think that's what's happening here, so we just have to have that balance, I just want to caution, I mean, it's a big number, it is $400,000 per 1%, it's just, it's a big, huge number. And so we have to have balance, we have the economic outlook for the future, I'm really glad that we did the budget stabilization, so we do have six months' reserve, because we just don't know what's coming. And so I think this is a good way that sends a message, as Mr. Knutson mentioned, to our team, you are so important to us, we value you, we thank you for what you're doing, we're going to keep an eye on you throughout this whole process, but we also need to balance the reserves. We don't get to go outside of the box, like, when we take, when we increase one, we have to take it from somewhere else, there's no additional ways that we can innovate to get new revenues or those types of things, because it's all taxpayer-public dollars. So I applaud Mr. Knutson and your team for coming forward and saying to us, this is what we need, it sounds like the council is supportive in this area, and we'll be able to move forward in that direction, so. All right, Eddie, Councilmember Koch, you have?
I just want to echo kind of what you were saying, again, in my work outside of here, and I see it a lot, we are in a different generation where it is not unheard of for people to, because they'll make $5 more an hour, to drive to another community to work, where the talent just leaves, and I'm flabbergasted, it's just not how I would live, but there are people that that two, three-hour commute does not bother them if they're going to make $2 or $3 more an hour, and it's the way it is now. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to have these discussions every year, but it's what's happening in the environment and the world that we live in today. So although you and I like to live here and work here, there are people who like to live here but will work somewhere else, and they'll be just as happy, so it's just the reality of where we live to try to keep our talented people here and working for us.
All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Olson?
Just briefly, so, as I said, the unfunded liability number, I thought that's not right. So some people Google it, I actually just asked Angie, and so it's $80 million for PSPRS is the unfunded liability, $105 million total when you add ASRS to that. And then on the property tax, the increase equates to about $4.50 per $100,000 of assessed value. Okay?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Angie.
Yeah, and when you talk about unfunded liabilities, that's at 100% funded.
Correct.
Which is not ever going to be the goal, so.
Right.
Okay, excellent. All right, this is a public hearing, yeah, would you like to address the council on this item?
Hello, David Diaz, quick question, first, a comment on the conversation, you guys all make great points, I agree 100% with Mr. Moses, a targeted approach on, instead of doing a flat 5%, because you have some employees that are probably making a satisfactory wage for them when they're comfortable, and they can live, there are others that need that, and I worked for a large 49,000 employee company, we had $20 billion worth of sales, we would never just do a flat rate, everyone gets the same raise. It's just, you have your department heads look at each individual's needs, you have those discussions with them, you got to take care of some people. As Nancy said, you have some people that you got stacks of applications this way, and you have others that are here. So a targeted approach is the way to do it, that's just my point. A question I have on the page, I don't know if we want to go back to where it's water, wastewater and water, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at this right, so we had estimated expenditures of 18.7 million on the water, and 31.3 on the wastewater, that's $50 million, and then on the available resources, it's 49 million. So you taking the 9.7 out of that, so we're either short 8 million or we're plus a million? I just wanted to figure that one out.
The 9.7 is actually coming out of that beginning balance of the 48.7.
So we're going to, based on this, we're going to fall short $8 million? Is that what I'm looking at? That's what? If you add wastewater and water together, it's $50 million of expenditures, estimated expenditures, take out 9.7, then add 13.3, so we're going to be short $8 million? Is that what?
Well, yeah, so we don't like to add different numbers in different categories, because they're different enterprise funds, so it's a little tricky, the math that you're presenting there, but we will be in a deficit when our current utility rate structure today. So since the council is in the process of evaluating the utility rates and what that's going to look like, there will be deficits. I don't know if that's what's described on this.
The reason I was asking, Mr. Mayor, is because I know when the ADD went away, we were talking about, it was like a $5 million plus to the community, and all we had to do is replace $5 million to stay whole with our wastewater and water, and if I'm correct, we're going to be short $8 million, so I'm just wondering what that?
Yeah, no, great, great point, and thank you for the question, because it allows us to clarify some things. So it was $5.7 million of the ADD, and that was only for the water fund, not the wastewater fund. And so the replacement of the 5.7 was the beginning benchmark of what we had to do with the utility rate study, but we also have infrastructure. So we have a 10-year outlook in the current utility rate study, saying, what infrastructure do we need to ensure that we're offering quality water and wastewater services to our users, and what's that going to cost? So it takes in a variety of different components. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I believe, Ms. Olson, Mr. Knutson, you have the direction you need on this portion, this item, we're comfortable there to move on to our next item?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, excellent. All right, we'll move on to item five, which is our capital improvement plan overview. I will start with item 5.1, is presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff on the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more kind of what we, council sees every year, a presentation of the CIP, and what that looks like, obviously, many different funds, through enterprise funds, general fund, and otherwise, but now we get into the nitty-gritty, we get to talk about some of the details, I talk about actual projects, the focus on the projects will be what's going to occur next year, in terms of the draft plan presented to council. Jill will talk about the numbers, Greg will talk about the projects, and there's some, looking forward to some conversations, because there's some pretty cool projects in here. You will see another conversation that's going to take place on the water and wastewater funds. It is a, we understand it, we understand what the issues are, we're, the council's addressing it, but I think some questions that may come from the public that pop up about what does this actually mean? So this approach, we'll see here in a little bit, where we look at what does the fund balance have to be in years six past the five-year CIP for water and wastewater? What does that number have to be to make sure that we're able to continue with the operations, with personnel, and the minimum it would take to address some of the concerns and issues of the system? You're going to see a lot of red ink when we get to that point. That red ink is all the cuts that would have to be made if no action is taken on rates, based on where we need to be in year six. So I think it was like what Jill touched base with this, too, but 21 million in one fund and $23 million in another fund, but you'll see that. So the exercise here isn't saying that we don't want these projects to occur, they need to occur, but just trying to show a little bit what that means with kind of a visual aid, if you will, through the CIP process. So, there's more to be said, I'll turn over to Ms. Olson and Mr. Crossley, thank you.
Mayor, one quick question regards to his, what was the CIP budget for this year that we put into water? Wasn't it like $10 million? Didn't we have a massive, if you don't know it offhand, because he's seeing that 9.7 million, but if I remember correctly, we had a pretty hefty payout for CIP that, this same year? Maybe?
You'll see that about four slides from now, not the grand total, but you'll see all of those water projects.
Thank you.
That were included in this year's. So to start, again, the booklet that you have in front of you has five years with the projects, there are some for water and wastewater that are considered to be immediate needs for the coming fiscal year, and we've tried to be very careful with our projections to determine if there is available revenue or fund balance in order to kind of time these projects, and to determine which ones can be done, which ones can't, should there not be a rate increase. Greg's going to take the lead in reviewing the existing and the future capital projects from a global perspective, and then if you have detailed questions about projects, staff is prepared to answer those as well. So Greg, we'll start off with a recap of this year's FY23 CIP projects.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Mayor and council, good morning. What I will be presenting over the next four slides is our fiscal year 2223 CIP, or our current projects, as Jill indicated. Some have been completed, and some are in various stages of design and construction. We also, early on, had to make a decision to not start certain projects, because unfortunately, what we were seeing with our bids coming in, approximately 25% over what our budget was across the board. I can tell you, just yesterday, we opened up a water tank replacement project, it was a $2 million project, and it came, the low bid was 2.2, so that's 10%, so maybe that's good news, too early to tell, maybe. So like I said, some of the projects have not started or delayed, but I will go through the slides and provide some updates on a few of the more visible projects, it's a long list, there's four slides that look like this, so I won't hit every single project, of course. The first slide shows, we start with some airport projects, we've got some, a lot of activity at the airport this year. The most notable, well, the replacement of the AWAS, the council just accepted a grant award for that one, so we're in design for that. Runway strengthening and overlay project, that's the big one, it's about a $6 million project where we're going to completely mill full depth, the runway, close it down, take it out, and repave it completely. So that's a big impact to the airport, we just had our pre-construction conference on that Tuesday of this week, and went very well. We met with the contractors, the testing company, the engineer, all the subcontractors, and worked out all the logistics, and I'm actually quite optimistic that this is going to go very well. You see a list of our washcrossing projects, we do an annual program to stabilize the wash banks, we kind of have a problem with the washes, the banks of the washes migrating towards private property and sometimes onto private property, so we go in and we stabilize those banks to make sure they stay on the city's property. We also have something a little different, where we have, under washcrossing improvements, we have two projects that are actually culverts and roadway realignments, where we're raising the roadway in areas that they flood, where we can't pass anymore, that's over at the Queens Bay cul-de-sac, and we have a problem at Eldorado near Dolphin, where we've got a bit of a ramp, and we've had some accidents due to a high rate of speed, so we're going to do reconfiguration of the roadway alignment in that area as well. The downtown catalyst project, we just had an update on, and the city fuel facility, that 300,000 is for a design contract that you'll be seeing, if not next meeting, the following meeting, to design two citywide fuel facilities, so two gas stations for city vehicles only. And I can, I'll tell a little story here, the next page. Bridgewater, excuse me, Bridgewater channel dredging, we've completed phase one, where we had that pinch point at the mouth, where, towards Thompson Bay, that's been removed. The municipal courthouse is going great, the framing actually for the interior walls is almost complete, and the concrete floor for the second story has been poured this week. So the floor, on the second floor, has doubled in size. If anybody wants to take a tour, just reach out to me, and we can arrange that, because it looks completely different in there, it's really cool. Aquatic Center HVAC, a little bit of bad news is we're having some delivery issues with the actual HVAC unit, so the contractor has demoed, hopefully they'll be back next month when the equipment arrives, they can finish that project up rather quickly at that point. project up rather quickly at that point. Pickleball courts are in use. Police fuel facility, we had five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars budgeted to remove the underground fuel tank at the police station and replace it with an above-ground tank. And when we opened bids on that project, it came in at right around a million bucks, so double what we had. And we also had the design money I just talked about to design another gas station right next door, in between this building and Fire Station One off of inlet. So we decided we reduce this project to just removal, and the P D can use the new facility next door. We got some water in one of the piers on the London Bridge, that's under design. The island treatment plant flow equalization basin, you see that's a high number. That project is going very well, once we approve that, you guys approved that one million dollar change order. Right now, that basin is actually completed, it's being coated right now, and all the underground piping is complete, so we should be operational with that big project sometime in October or November. So lots of good projects. We'll keep moving to the next one. Park Avenue lift station, that's, you see all that, Park Avenue lift station was part of the original sanitary district, and was quite old, and for decades, the only thing, the only demand it had on it was the aquatic center. Now that area is getting full build out, so we're doing some repairs just to make sure we can handle the additional flows. That's under design. Twenty twenty-three pipeline rehab and replacement, that was a grant-funded project that we did not get, so that's not happening. Exploratory well drilling, as you know, and backup water supply, that's ongoing, basically complete. We've got another project to improve our north well field. Twenty twenty-two water main replacement project, that is the project that we have all endured for the last few months on Lake Havasu Avenue between Akoma and Kaewa. I'm happy to report that yesterday, the last bit of pavement went down, so that street has completely opened up. It rides great. We just got a little bit of striping and some cleanup, and we can move on from that project as well. The twenty twenty-three water main replacement program, that was a design that we decided not to do. We had to use that funding to subsidize some of the other projects that were coming in slightly over budget. The collector well, another very important project. We're about at ninety percent right now. Once we finish with the north well improvements, our well field, our north well field needs to have some electrical improvements and backup generation. Once that's done, we can take the horizontal collector well, and this one will be ready for construction at that point, sometime next, early next year. We talked about the north well field improvements. The next page here is our backup water treatment plant. We didn't do that one, that was a hundred thousand dollars to study the need for a secondary treatment plant. Probably not at full capacity that we need. We treat anywhere between ten and fourteen million, depending on the time of year, million gallons every single day. We should have a smaller treatment plant to provide some amount of water if we had a problem with our main water treatment plant. So we've kind of got all our eggs in one basket right now, which is not untypical. I mean, a lot of communities have that same situation, but we pushed this out because it wasn't a dire need, and we're kind of short on money right now. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Jill to talk about funding sources.
Thank you. So available funding for the five-year plan. All of the projects in your book, except for wastewater and water, have, are balanced and funded. Again, a reminder, the construction sales tax is a dedicated funding source. We use that amount to determine how much will be transferred from the general fund to be for general government projects. And then, in addition to that, on the vehicle license tax that we collect in the general fund, we take twenty percent of that number, and that is a dedicated funding source to transfer into the highway user revenue fund for street projects in the C I P. So for the five-year total, we have about a hundred and sixty-two million dollars over the next five years for all funds, and none of the projects at this time include any debt issuance. For water and wastewater, we have the utility rate study pending, so we've kept revenues fairly flat, so they do not reflect any rate increases, at least in these preliminary numbers. So with the hundreds of millions of dollars of water and wastewater infrastructure that we have, C I P is one of the mechanisms we use to invest in those facilities, to be able to provide safe and reliable utility services. However, in order to achieve a balanced and funded five-year C I P, critical projects in water and wastewater have been removed that still need to be completed. So you're going to see items on the list where we're just going to have to delay them, but there are other items that aren't even on the list, that are just considered unfunded at this point, and we need to keep that in mind. An increase in funding levels is needed to provide the resources that we need to maintain our water and wastewater infrastructure. So more on the water and wastewater utility funds. Insufficient revenues in both funds for operating and capital needs. Several projects have been moved to unfunded, and then others have been placed in the current C I P with an on-hold status, pending the rate study outcome. So we've got the unfunded or on the on-hold. For water, currently, there's about eighteen and a half million dollars of unfunded, plus another twenty-three point eight million dollars that are just on hold. For wastewater, seventeen point eight million unfunded, another twenty-one point six million dollars of projects on hold. I can't stress enough how critical the additional revenues are that are needed for both water and wastewater funds. We have to have a rate structure that supports not only the operations and maintenance, but the capital outlay and the C I P for utility funds. The prior rate study was conducted. Not all recommendations in that study were implemented for various reasons and justifiable reasons, but it resulted in us not meeting revenue projections, because we were not going to be able to collect what had been projected in the study. So especially in the water fund, we have been short revenues to cover all of the utility costs. So for the current and the next five years, with no rate increase, each year for the funds has a net loss. So the expenditures are exceeding the revenues in the next five years with no rate increase. Only the amounts available in each of the funds' available resources, or sometimes called fund balance, is allowing for the revenue shortfall to be covered. So we do at least initially have some fund balance, where we're able to at least continue O N M and continue with critical C I P projects. But we have no current revenue going toward the C I P, only the fund balance that is available, that is available on the C I P. So once again, not sufficient fund balance or available resources to get through the next five years. We will run out before the end of that five-year period with no additional revenue source. In reviewing the summary of the projects in your handout, you will see many items showing up in the red font that Mr. Knutson mentioned, in the water and wastewater funds. Again, these are placed on hold until additional revenues are identified. Water and wastewater are enterprise funds, meaning that they should be supported by user fees and not subsidized by the general fund. Though we're not in the business of making a profit with our utility funds, we also have the responsibility to take the steps necessary to cover all of the costs, both operating and capital. The other area of concern with the lack of revenues is the bond debt service coverage ratio. Our bonds, and the majority of those are on the wastewater side, require that we meet a debt service coverage ratio of one point two times the annual debt service. With the loss of the I D D property tax and the loss of revenues from other rate adjustments, we have a substantial risk of not meeting that debt coverage ratio for the current fiscal year. The debt service will be paid, because those bonds were issued as general obligation bonds, so they are backed by the general fund. So the debt service will be paid, but it's critical that we have additional revenues necessary to also cover the O N M and the capital. Here is a breakdown of the five-year C I P by city service. More than half of the C I P is used for water and wastewater improvements, when they're not on hold. Drainage projects are improvements to our washes and our drains, funded by our portion of the flood control dollars, and that's about two and a half million dollars per year. Grant funding is what allows for the expenditures on the airport side. The majority of those funds come from grants, with the small amount of the match being paid for by the airport funds, after the general fund makes the transfer to the airport fund. And then the highway user revenue fund is a small amount, because the level of funding received from the state is only sufficient for ongoing expenses and projects in the operating budget. So that amount that we get in highway user revenue funds is really needed for O N M, and so the additional funds, such as the million and the other street money that we've been transferring from the general fund, is contributing to the additional street work that we're able to do and schedule. This is just a breakdown of the five-year C I P by funding source. In that grant line item, the ARPA funding is included in that grant total. What staff is proposing, which you will see in the C I P, is that the ARPA funding be primarily be spent on the police facility and the jail rehab project, and for the building of Fire Station Seven. So now I will turn it back to Greg to take a closer look at what we have for the future C I P.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Mayor and council, the next few slides will be a review of the proposed C I P for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which, as you know, starts in July. You will see a lot of the same project names, due to the project spanning multiple years with design and construction. And once we cover this next fiscal year projects, we will have a few slides for you showing the five-year C I P broken down by category, such as drainage, airport, water, wastewater That will clearly demonstrate to you the amount of work and expense that we are planning for over the next five years, and it is significant. We'll start here with the projects. At first slide, we talked about some of the airport projects. The runway strengthening and overlay, it's really a bad title. It's the runway replacement, that's just a continuation of the construction. Taxi U A C, that's a design contract. There's your, this exact same wash projects that were under design this current fiscal year, they'll go to construction hopefully this next fiscal year. Kaewa drain is next on the list for design. Downtown catalyst, okay, here's the city fuel facilities. The two gas stations, if you will, that we're talking about, one is located next door here off of Inlet Drive between Fire Station One and the P D, and the other is located down at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. And you can see one is twice as much as the other, and that's mostly due to the amount of grading and site preparation. There's a lot of grade differential on that property next door. So these are simply budget numbers. What staff is looking at right now is doing some of that grading and hogging out the dirt and flattening it out in-house with our own public works crews to get that construction amount to a lesser amount, hopefully. And then there's the courthouse, which again is just a continuation of the construction. So we have the aquatic center H V A C, finalizing construction, Site Six boat ramp. As you know, we got a grant for the reconstruction, reconstruction of the boat ramp at Site Six. That's what you're looking at there. We're currently under design for that through contingency or ARPA, I can't remember. As Jill indicated, Fire Station Seven finally made it into the C I P. That is money for the design contract. The P D has a need for additional secured storage for evidence, so we're looking at expanding their rear parking lot through the C I P. P D facility and jail rehab, if you remember, we got a grant for one point seven million dollars to do what is now approximately a five million dollar project, so that's what we'll be hopefully spending next year on that. That's currently under design, should finish up the design in May. City core paving, that's the downtown paving, the Lake Havasu Avenue, all these paving projects, and I think the one on the start of the next page are all part of that ten million dollar paving program that we put together. However, it looks like we may be successful with a house transportation bill, so we could get, possibly get those streets paved with state funding, which of course frees up that ten million dollars for us to do more street paving. So we're finalizing a list to continue with all the wonderful paving that's happening around town. Next slide. Island treatment, or the F E B at the island, that's continuation of construction. These are all basically some of the annual maintenance we have to do, or the construction dollars for what was designed last year. The lift station upgrade program, that's an annual program. We've got approximately seventy lift stations to move wastewater through town, so we try to work on at least one every year. We're actually starting, after many, many years, we're seeing an uptick in the amount of sewage we're flowing. For years, we hovered on either side of four million gallons per day of wastewater, and we're up close to five million gallons pretty consistently now, so a lot of people here. The last one on this page is a project to convert Cypress Park from potable water to effluent for irrigation. It's tied to a grant. Even if we don't get the grant, I'd still consider doing the project simply because we have some effluent disposal issues that we battle every single year. Now, this would really help with that. And I think we've talked about all of those projects. Most critical there is probably the collector well redevelopment. Those are the construction dollars that we hope to get started on next year, to get that collector well back up and running and be our main water source. So here we are at the category portion of the presentation, and since we've talked about all these projects already, really, the point we're trying to make, as I mentioned, is the significant amount of money we're spending, or planning on spending in the next five years. Airport alone, luckily, this is ninety percent plus grant-funded. We have twenty-eight point four million dollars programmed for the next five years, just at the airport. And we'll go through these quickly, because I think we want to get to the water and wastewater slides anyways. Drainage projects, we have a dedicated funding source for this too, which is awesome. These are strictly picked by priority out of the drainage master plan. We try to do two or three per year. We got twenty point four million dollars programmed over the next five years, just in drainage. General government, if we're able to do those fuel facilities, which I think is important, we finished the courthouse. We're looking at fifteen point six million dollars in general government project, a lot of high numbers. Parks, hopefully, we can finish the H V A C. We've got the fishing dock replacement, and the all-important island walking path replacement. I think that's an important one. That's actually programmed for this next fiscal year, so seven point two million dollars in parks projects. Public safety, Fire Station Seven, and the work at the P D we talked about, twelve point one million dollars just in public safety. London Bridge deck repair, there's nothing wrong with the deck, that refers to the pavement. A dot does an inspection every year of the London Bridge, and they rated our pavement on the London Bridge as being very low and wants us to replace it. When I went and looked at it, it was actually some of the better pavement we have around town, so it's in the C I P, but I pushed it out a year or two. And these are all the other paving projects we talked about, twenty-nine million in paving over the next five years. Wastewater, if you remember earlier when Jill was talking about the funding, she had a slide that showed that the wastewater- that the wastewater had 17.8 million in unfunded projects and 21.6 million in projects that are now placed on hold. The 17.8 million is a result of the last few years of Jill calling me and saying, cut, 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 millions of dollars, 10 million, 8 million. Cut it out of the five-year C and water and waste CIP and wastewater. So what I'm told is if we don't have a successful rate study for water and wastewater, the projects in red will need to be pulled out so we can afford to do the other projects. Some of these projects are, well, all of these projects are very important. I'm looking at the Vedos Well, which is could be placed on hold at $3.6 million. Vedos Wells are permitted disposal method for the North Regional Plant, and if we can't continue to design and construct Vedos Wells out there, we could be in violation with a permit with the state. And I'm not sure what that means. So very important projects. And some of these are actually scheduled to go to bid very soon. So very important that we have success with the with the rate study. As you can see, there's more red projects than black projects. We can move to water. Same thing with water. The earlier slide had 18.5 million in unfunded as a result of cuts in the previous years, and this year alone, 23.8 for this current five-year CIP. We could lose $23.8 million if we don't properly implement a new rate study for our utilities. So these are all the projects. We've talked about them through the individual years. Lot of red. Yeah, even the horizontal collector well. So that's really all I had for individual project updates. Mr. Knutson, if you had anything to add, or Jill? Other than that, we can take some questions.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add. It's just, again, those were the first wave of those projects was kind of like the existing projects that are being worked on in this year. And then we talked about the the CIP for for next year and some of the highlighting some of those projects, including Station 7 and the Island Path Repave and many other projects there, Downtown Catalyst or City Park Development, now we're referring to it as. But and then and then and then highlight too, but we're talking about five years worth of projects. So a lot of focus is on those first two years. Just trying to let counsel and the public know kind of what's what's coming in, you know, in the in the short term. But five-year plan. And thank you to Mr. Frosley and his team for putting that together in a way that we can complete that puzzle, if you will. We know what the dollars are, and we know what projects cost, and now we got to identify what that looks like. What you're not seeing on on those those slides and those projects are the all the projects that were that were requested or identified as needs but didn't make the list. So that that list has already been whittled down. I think it's which is an important, important thing to consider. So then I think then so then staff comes before counsel and says it's a fully funded CIP, right? Because that we know what the existing resources are, and then we can put together that puzzle based on the resources we have and the projects that are on the top of the priority list.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Frosley, Ms. Olson, for putting that presentation together. This does have lots of priorities that the citizens have been asking for, and that this council's been championing, like Station 7, the rehab of this building at the Police Department, getting the downtown project completed throughout that. The island walking path is it's going to be amazing for all of the thousands of users that use that on a regular basis. So we have some really great priorities. I think an overarching message that I kept hearing through the presentation is that the utility rate study is very important, and I don't want to undermine what what that means, because it is. But I do believe that we have an understanding and we, as we're going through that process, that we are going to do what's right based on what the needs are from an expense standpoint and an operation standpoint. We have already identified that that was what the need was when we implemented the current rate structure that we have now. We knew we had deficit spend, like that that's that was a given that we were going to be doing that, knowing we were going to be coming back in a year, which we're in that process right now. So and hopefully we'll have those those rates structured very close to the same time that this budget goes into effect. So any questions, comments from members of the council, for anyone on the team? Councilor Moses?
Mayor, a couple of questions. Jill, what happens if we don't meet that debt ratio on the bond? You said a 1.2% ratio, right? What happens if we spend too much of our savings to not meet that ratio?
Spending too much of the savings could operate, it could impact O and M. That's why we're trying to very carefully balance the O and M against the CIP, even though this infrastructure in the CIP is also very critical in many areas. As far as the debt coverage ratio, the first thing that would happen if if we do not meet it, it'll be determined as we kind of go through the audit, as we're looking at all the final numbers after June 30. If it's determined that for this fiscal year, we did not meet the coverage ratio of 1.2 times, the first step is to disclose that to the market since we have bonds. So we go out on the national site and have to post disclosure of that shortcoming. Ultimately, it it would affect our credit ratings and our ability to issue bonds, and even if we could issue bonds in the future, it will it it will certainly affect the interest rate that we would have to pay. So it could have long-term detrimental effects until that gets turned around.
Yeah, those aren't good things. And then Greg, I just want to commend you and your team. I mean, I'm not too worried about all that red on that paper because I think this council is committed to solving all those issues and those, you know, fixing our rate structure. I will tell you that I absolutely love that we're using, going to try and switch over Cypress Park to reclaim water. I love that we found that opportunity. I'd love to find more as many as we can. Fire Station is a huge, Fire Station 7 is a huge priority that I'd like to make sure that gets done. And then, and then as along with the roads, I love, I love that we put our $10 million up towards fixing, you know, putting into our roads and infrastructure there. If we do get that additional grant funding, I'd like it to be on top of the six, the $10 million. Just want to make sure we don't combine those and still only get 10. If we get that grant from from the state, I'd love to increase that because I hear it every single day from all of our citizens, we want, we want a better road system. So appreciate all your work. I think you two have and the whole team have done a great job.
Councilor Campbell?
Mayor and counsel, I completely agree with Mr. Moses on everything he discussed, and this package is incredibly presented, or maybe I've just been here long enough to really understand it and comprehend it, which is wonderful. I thank you for all you do. I have a couple of questions. First off, and the only reason why I'm going to bring this up is because I hate to be selling asphalt when I can sell concrete, and it just goes away. As we know, drive around town, drive on a concrete parking lot, see how long it stays there and how the company has never interrupted. Now, drive around and look at the asphalt parking lots in this community and look how disruptive they are. I'm not a fan of asphalt. Yes, I sell it. I'm not a fan of it. With that being said, could we get a price to replace, hang on, replace the walking path with concrete? Why would I say that? Of course, you have the milling, you could do the baby pavers out there. My husband loves baby pavers, but and he would be one of the many contractors that would bid this job. But I see that we're adding plants and infrastructure there and to constantly, I don't know, how long has it been since we've had to, or we work on that path all the time, don't we? We're constantly crack filling it, we're constantly doing something with it.
Yes, because we're constantly getting complaints about it.
Well, again, because we used a poor product. I'm kidding. But I would love to know what would that cost to just replace that, put that in concrete and set it and forget about it? Because as the island continues to grow and infrastructure continues, it would be a really great way to, and safety-wise as well, for the bicycles, the walking paths, those big cracks are dangerous to our pedestrians. Also, the next question I have is with the fuel tanks. I'm a little tossed on that. Where do we buy our fuel now?
I believe, well, the PD, they have their own tank, and I believe they buy in bulk from Parker Oil. The, and we also have a contract with Parker Oil, and most of Public Works vehicles fuel at Parker Oil because it's convenient, it's it's near the maintenance facility, and there's no canopies for our larger equipment, so we can fit there. But my understanding is Fire and maybe Parks, they use a gas station, Smiths, you know, wherever it might be cheapest.
And I could understand that because we're we're in the same boat. We have the card systems as well because you don't want to be driving halfway across town to save 50 cents or 25 cents. And/or my next question would be, are we responsible for our own her funding taxes upon that? Are we exempt from having to pay gas fuel taxes?
I don't know.
Ms. Olson?
I don't believe we're exempt, but we will find out and get back to you on that one.
Mayor and counsel, we can get some more details and so forth, but part of the analysis that Greg's putting together talks about our ability to buy in bulk would then negate our requirement to pay for fuel tax.
So if we are buying in bulk, I would assume for Parker Oil, we're probably still paying for our fuel taxes at that point because that was important to me. I don't want to have tax dollars to pay for a bulk tank service and having our employees having to drive completely across town past fuel stations and that are entrepreneurs in our community that help to feed and employ people. So I'm just concerned, I'd like a little more information on that. I don't think the the new fuel tanks are a top priority. I can understand the underground ones definitely need to go, but when you put them above ground, there's a lot of liability with that as well, the wall systems that you put around them. Because we do both for sure, but I will tell you, we we have saved a lot more money by just telling our employees, don't stand in line at our fuel tanks, stations for an hour waiting to get fueled because it's the morning shift or whichever. Go out, here's your debit card, you know, get yourself the fuel that you need within the community and fund the community, and and it it works for us. But we do have both, so I'm interested in both. But I think I just need to know a little bit more, how how long, those those miles issues, like how far are we driving? Are we going to be in a lineup? You know, it's kind of, those are my concerns because we've had them at our own company. So the other question would be, how much would we actually save per year if you think every one of our fuels, that we stop fueling throughout the community and go straight to our own? I know what we're using now, it's it's not something we can discuss because we know the number, but the ones that were are out fueling, like you said, the parks and stuff, how much money would we really save each year if we had them going back?
Yeah, that's a great question. The ROI is something that I'm currently working on. I'll have that as part of the presentation when we go to council with a design contract. It's a, it's quite an undertaking. As it turns out, we don't track gallons very well, but we do track our expenditures to the penny. So we need to know how many gallons we're we're using, not how much we're spending to do that analysis. So that part's happening right now. Staff is
I could see that to be it.
meticulously going through receipts and trying to estimate gallons right now so we can get a good, solid number for for council.
Okay, one extra question, is the concrete repaving underneath the bridge? That is still a top priority priority to me. It looks horrible down there, and it's also dangerous. Have we, what is our plan for that? Is, I don't see it on this, is it a CIP currently? Where is that standing?
It's in our operating budget, and because we went out to bid and they came in so high, we took another look at the design, made a few changes. Because we're short on time, we're utilizing a concrete JOC with the Mojave County, and right now we have, we sent the plans to five contractors that are on that JOC, and their bids are due back to us tomorrow.
Okay. And I know one of the main reasons why those bids did come in so high is you have all those pavers down there that you're going to have to drive over, the danger of jackhammering up underneath that bridge. And so I, you know, I know why those bids did come in high, so I'll be curious to see how these new ones come in and
Yeah. To try to combat that fear, Mr. Young has met with several of those contractors to talk about construction techniques and smaller equipment with rubber tires rather than tracks to try to help these potential contractors overcome the the fear of damaging those pavers to to their expense.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
In regards to the island path, we don't have money to to do that project yet, so if approved, then we'll build a bid package to send out to bid, and we can, we can certainly include both concrete and asphalt in that bid package.
That would be very interesting to see, and I'd like to see that moving forward on other projects. I know two or three years ago, I even discussed that about the airport, you know, it'd be kind of interested in today's world, the cost of oil, to see what would it cost to have it done in concrete versus. And so years ago, asphalt was hands down the most inexpensive way to lay it, but in the long term, we know that that's, there's a lot of work, a lot of work for your Public Works to maintain these as well. So one and done, I'm kind of a get it done right the first time kind of a gal. So moving forward, if we can continue, if there's an opportunity to use concrete over asphalt, I would always love to see both of those. But thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? Vice Mayor Lane?
Mayor, you might as well just work down the line.
Sure. Excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Good job, everybody. You guys work hard. This is another budget that we've had where we have no tax increases, we have no borrowing of money, a fully funded CIP. But as Mr. Knutson said, it's fully funded because we didn't put all the projects in it. There are projects that need to be done. As you know, I've said this time and time again, I do not like deferred maintenance. We have a lot, we've kicked things down the road, other people have kicked things down the road. When it comes to water and wastewater, you see all the red. We cannot afford to kick water and wastewater down the road. People hire us, they voted for us to make really tough decisions, and no matter what decisions we make, when they turn that faucet, they expect water to come out of it. And when they push that handle down, they expect all the bad stuff to go away, and it's our responsibility to make sure that happens and that we give the city staff the tools to do that. When it comes to the parks budget, one of the things I didn't see in there was money for the maintenance of the the sports fields for the the kids. We've heard from people at our council meetings, we've heard at Parks and Rec, that our ball fields are in really bad shape and to the point where the kids can't even play on it all the time. To me, that'd be a higher priority than the island walking path, but there may be room for both, hopefully, that we can get some of those things in there because investing in our youth is extremely important. So I'd like to see that added in there somewhere as you're working on this budget. And that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. I believe the maintenance for the parks that you're describing is going to be in our next presentation. Is that correct, Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we're looking at the the identification of the CIP here too. There are other projects, it'll be in kind of a capital outlay, tools, equipment, vehicles, all those types of things. And then we'll be looking at park amenities or park improvements would be in there. A very specific definition for for CIP that Jill holds us accountable for and rightfully so. But we'll be able to talk a little bit about maintenance of our existing park facilities at our next work session.
Councilor Dole, do you have any comments or thoughts or questions?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I really liked the items in red, letting us know what's what we need to do and what's out there. My concern is, how many other colors did we not use? If on a scale of 1 to 10, the things that are on the CIP budget are 12, and the red is 10, or how many nines and eights are there? So like I said, bringing up some of the issues with the sports fields, deferred maintenance is a huge issue I think we need to stay on top of, and of course, the the pay structure as well. We do, we are here to make tough decisions, and I think, like I said, just the wastewater and water, you know, like I said, the items in red shows that we do have some tough decisions we do have to make. So like I said, I do appreciate that presentation, the way it was presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cole?
So I can say this is definitely a first, my first budget session where we've had so many projects that are in red. So it doesn't really make me feel good. It's unfortunate. So hopefully, we can make those changes at the water and wastewater study to help Greg move forward with some of these projects. As we know, nobody wants move forward with some of these projects. As we know, nobody wants to live in a city where your water doesn't work and your wastewater system doesn't work. And we definitely don't want to see anything happen to affect our lakes. So thank you to the staff. I appreciate all of your hard work, especially going through and having to say which ones you're going to cut out if you had to. And Ms. Olson, I remember when we were doing the bonds for the sewer project and how important it was for us to make sure we have a good bond rating, and how important that was when we went through that process. So I appreciate your diligence on that and look forward to the next couple of meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Okay. I kind of have a few concerns on the, the fuel facilities, too. On the priority list, can you explain to me like the necessary, it's one to three years, like what is the priority? Like, why is that such a top priority that it's done?
Well, I think that it was really just spurred because we tried to do the, the project for the PD, and it came in double what we had budgeted. So I think the, I think the ratio right now is we're saving about 60 cents per gallon by buying in bulk. So that's why I started at Jess's request to do that analysis to see how much, you know, I guess really, we made a lot of assumptions that this was, this rate of return was going to be five years or less. And Jess said, how do we know that? And I'm like, because it's 60 cents per gallon, we must, you know, we spent over a million dollars on fuel last year citywide. So to his credit, we're dialing in to get that rate of return. And if it doesn't pan out, I won't bring that design contract to council.
Okay, that's kind of what my concern is. Because I was looking at going, we're spending three, 3.7 million to save 60 cents, like what does that return look like? So I have some concerns on that. It's not a big deal, but on the Aquatic Center, the Havoc, we have in there another $300,000 of ARPA money. I would rather see that money coming out of the general fund. On page 21, there's about $298,000 additional money coming from the ARPA funds.
Page 21, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, that, that's the ARPA funds that were used, that the council made a decision on last year.
Okay, is that additional?
It's not, it's not additional.
Okay.
It's what council decided on. So it gets a little tricky when we have projects that extend over a couple of years.
Okay.
And what that looks like. But, but we, we track those projects from inception to completion. So.
Okay.
No additional ARPA funds going towards that project.
Okay. And then I don't know if I missed something, or didn't we, and I believe last year, talked about the Fire Station 5 remodel? Was it Fire Station, or did we take that out?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, what you had in the CIP last year was the design for the remodel of Station 5. It was removed. We either need to, need to put the entire project in the CIP or remove it in entirety. You can't just fund the design and then hoping money comes in the future to pay for construction. So that's the approach. So talk about projects that don't make the list, that's just, that's just off the list. That's year six. But the, the direction on this one was to do the, the new build for Station, for Station 7. Yeah. It's still on the radar. It's not, to make the five-year CIP, but it's, it's on, it's on our secondary list, for sure. And it'll, it'll remain there until we figure out a solution.
Well, can you remind us what, what the remodel was? Like what we were, I mean, I just want to know, is there an urgency to do that remodel over there?
We're doing some facility assessments over at that, that side. It's, it's old. We did some testing for mold, but it came back largely in a good standing, or in good standing at large, but in good standing for, for any type of issues that were there. It's, it's an old structure that, that's, that is not compatible with our operations. And that's really what it comes down to. If I remember correctly, was that about a $4.5 million? A 4.5, chief, yeah. So about $4.5 million was, was the budget estimate, what it would take to basically demo and rebuild the station at that location.
Okay. I just don't want to ignore it if it's something that we should be like really addressing. So I am kind of curious, on the very last page, on the, I know it's, you know, it's pending council action, but the Riviera second feed line, can you explain why the city is responsible for putting that in?
The city installed the water main from, extended our system down to the, to the public marina. And that's a dead-end line. The developers are tapping into that one and putting all their own infrastructure in off of that line. What the second feed is, is hooking up onto the city's main line and public right away and looping it back into the system. So we don't have a water quality issue. Right now, we're actually draining that line into our wastewater list station to keep the chlorine residual at an appropriate level.
Okay, so this doesn't really affect the private developer? No, it's, I just want to make sure that if we're paying for something, we're paying for something at the city. Okay.
With the 100%.
Okay. And then the last thing, I, I kind of am curious, too, with Councilmember Campbell, what that would look like with a concrete walking path. So I'd like to see what the cost of something like that would look, look like. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, but I would like to address the council on this item.
I want to thank Greg for making this very easy for us lay, laypeople to understand. It's a good presentation. I do have one question and then a comment. So on the airport resurfacing or redoing the runway, that's all grant money, you said like 90% grant money?
It's, I think that grant is actually 100%. Typically, between FAA and ADOT, we're approximately 94.5% grant funded.
And then, but why is it 8.1, or almost 8.2 million this year, and then next year, '23, '24 says another, another 2.125 million, or no, I'm sorry, another 2.5 million? I thought it was a one-time.
It is. The, the eight million was based on an estimate. The project's actually closer to 6 million. So, but that, that was already adopted, the eight million. So it's been reduced, but it, it's over two fiscal years. We're not going to finish until, oh, no, it's not. We have a grant for 6 million. We have a contractor hired for approximately 6 million. So I'd have to look at how it's arranged in the CIP book here.
Mayor, I mean, if I can, it's just the, the concept of it carry forwards, Jill alluded to it early on, and it's something that we've seen more so the last couple of years. So we, we have, as a city, we have to fill all of our expenses and revenues tightly into a July 1st through June 30th timeline. If there's a project that bleeds into July, then we have to show it as a carry forward in next year's budget. It's not a duplication of, of funds, but it's, it's taking part of that, those funds and moving into the, the next fiscal year, because that's where we have to pay, that's, that's when we pay for it, or when we receive the service.
Thank you. And I met with a group of business guys that constantly fly in and out of the airport, and they love Mr. Dolan's idea about hangers. They're all in. So if we could somehow figure out that, that'd be good. And one last comment. So you do have to make hard decisions. I agree with Mr. Lane. And if we're transparent in the reason that we're doing it, we should be okay. People have to understand it. But the downtown catalyst, I'm glad, I, I know we have about $815,000 left from the America's Best City Funds, and then we, a thousand, a million dollar grant is all for parks, which is good. But I would not be spending another $900,000 out of the general fund for that park. That's especially, with all this red on here, we need to, I would think that people were going to push back heavy on that one. It's just a comment I wanted to make. Thanks.
Good morning, council, mayor. My curiosity runs with the list that is red. How critical is that going to be from now until five years from now? Because if it's there now, it's been brought up, there's stuff that was left off the list. To me, these, if they're on the list, they're critical, and we need to make sure that we address those situations so we don't get into a period of time that we don't have water, we don't have the sewer, and the people are going to suffer from it. So if there's grant money out there, which I'm sure there is some kind of grant money, if we can start writing grants for that, that we can accommodate our city.
Would anyone else like to address the council during the public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Just for clarification, the red that is shown in today's presentation is all in the water and wastewater funds. So it, the park money is not, would not even go into those enterprise funds. The real picture being told is that council has to act, and we need to, we need to address it, which we're doing. So we're right in the middle of the rate study, which again, hopefully will coincide, the outcomes will coincide with the, same time this budget goes into effect, which would then allow us to have certainty, those numbers then stay on the page, but they turn from red to black. So, but we'll, we'll have that as we continue on with those discussions and, and going forward. All right. Are there any final comments or questions from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one other question. So we did that whole fire study thing, and there were a lot of different needs in there. Are we covering all those needs? I mean, I don't know if they cover under this or operating, but all those needs that were in there, are we being able to cover like the top priority ones that were in there?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, you look at that fire study, very extensive document with the leadership of Chief Plowfus. Some of those are identifying and some operational issues that we can address, scheduling or those types of things that don't cost or have a minimal impact on, on the, on the budget, and some of them are longer term, right? Chief Plowfus has identified, checked, checked a lot of boxes just in the short time that studies that come out and so forth. But we're looking at what we can do, the CO, CON, the certificate of necessity was identified with, within that, and that's, that's a big effort. You'll see that, some of those come up at the next work session. So we'll have some positions, tools, resources, equipment, vehicles, that, that'll be contingent upon the city receiving that, the CON. So a lot of that will, will pop up there, too. Probably the biggest, through the CIP process, the biggest one that, that isn't on the list is what you've already indicated, and that's the remodel of Station 5. Yeah. We can go into a lot more detail with the next work session. We start talking about the operational budget.
Thank you. Because I do have the same concerns that our resident David Diaz had with the downtown catalyst project, because I don't necessarily see that as a need when we have things in our, you know, public safety that should be addressed first. So, you know, I'm not going to say no on a budget based on that because the consensus of the council has agreed. But I also don't agree with spending that extra money downtown.
Any other questions or comments, members of the council?
Mayor, I, I did my crazy math, and I just wanted to, the average fuel prices are about $3.99, removing 60 cents, I'd bring them down to 3.39, which is an average of about a 15% saving. So on that million dollars that we're spending in fuel for everybody that's using bulk or not bulk, it's coming to me that to replace that over $3 million, it's going to take about 20 years, not to mention the travel time to get to and from places. So again, these are just my numbers on this piece of paper, which is not on an Excel spreadsheet, which is probably better for Jill to plug those numbers in, or Greg to do that for us. But, so again, the fuel tank issue is a concern for me. Obviously, I agree with Councilwoman Lynn that parks are not a top priority to me unless we're funding pre-existing parks and ballfields that need maintenance. That's where I believe our park budget should be. But obviously, that was the census of the council to move the downtown catalyst forward. But personally, those are my only two concerns. Thank you much.
Any additional comments or questions? All right. As we wrap up, just again, thank you to all the staff. We spent two hours this morning on this, and I know you guys have spent countless hours with your departments and your teams, and obviously with finance and, and the city manager's office. So thank you so much for putting this together. It's a good relief that we can have a budget that comes with no tax increases, no debt spending, addresses many of the priorities of our citizens that we've heard. And I appreciate you guys presenting that to us. Look forward to our work session in May, and as we start to wind down the budget process into the final approval in June. So again, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or adjourn. Thank you for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.